Angela. Justin. You ready for us, Josh?
We're recording, yes.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to whatever the Columbia Planning and Zoning Commission. It's December 12th, 2022. We will be seating. Don Schofield for. Any changes or additions to the agenda? The Peace Planning and Zoning Minutes of November 14th, 2022. Any corrections?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll say. Any discussion? Votes in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Did you get Vera?
Vera, did you?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I have to abstain because the Zoom was not working.
Okay. Thank you. Audience of citizens, anything anyone would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the agenda for this evening? Okay. First off, we have a public hearing this evening. Just a bit of protocol for public hearing. If you'd like to comment or speak to the topic, please raise your hand or indicate your Zoom connection. Then we'd like to await to be recognized. And when you're recognized, please state your first name, last name, and the address that you go back and then make your questions or comments known. So this is a public hearing for Killenley Engineering Associates. Special permit for additions and improvements to propose auto dealership at 21 Route 66 East and Cart Mill Road, map nine lot 656667 per section 53.3, 53.4.1, and 62.9. So this is Wild Motors with Killenley Engineering as the representative of the applicant, which is an LLC, but the property is where we know it as Wild Motors. Well, by one night. So first up, Mr. Glaude, would you like to make a presentation for us?
Yeah, just I'll give a brief presentation again. Good evening for the record. My name is Greg Glaude. I'm a licensed land surveyor and principal partner at Killenley Engineering Associates with a place of business at 114 Westcott Road in Danielson, Connecticut. As you know, we came before you last month. Hyundai is the main brand of cars sold here, and they were implementing a design program for branding images and space planning inside the dealership and on the outside of the dealership. We had proposed showing you the plans last month during the public hearing where there would be three building building additions. One was a service entrance. One was a showroom addition on the front, and then the other one was part of the dealership in the back. The reason for the special permit was that we are in a flood zone. The flood zones associated with the Willimantic River. We told you that all of the design construction for the building will be done with flood vents so that they can get flow through that will be done in both the existing facility or existing building and in the new buildings as well. With that, we were also constructing a compensatory flood storage area to the rear just at the very far limits of the flood zone, the back southerly end of the property where we would be compensating for the flood area that we're filling in based on the foundation and the new floor areas. And the engineer had calculated that up. I think the only thing that we were looking for from last month was that we had a wetlands agent approval done on this, but that the Wetlands Commission themselves hadn't okayed her approval. That has been since done, and I think I think Paula, the town planner, had also gotten information on that. Other than that, if there were any other questions from the commission, I think everybody was pretty happy with things last month, but I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. If there are any other questions that I can answer, I'll be glad to.
I have no questions. Any commission members?
No.
No. Paul, Miss Paul.
Just a couple of things that you had mentioned at the last meeting. The fact that there was the three separate parcels and the Wild Motors separate system and the compensatory flood storage area not on the same parcels of the building. And you had indicated that the three parcels should probably be merged. I concur. I think that should be part of the motion tonight. And the other is just again, if you could confirm that the application for under section 62.9 will come at a later date.
Now, I assume that that's the section for the signs.
For the signs, yes.
With the applicant that with the owner of the property. Yeah, they will come to you, to the planner and to the building department with their signs when they're ready for that. And I did talk with the applicant today, and we're not opposed to merging the parcels. I think it's a good thing. I did see your notes on that. So I ran that by him. So if you guys would like to make that a condition, we're not opposed to that.
Yeah, I would encourage that is a condition. I'd also encourage the administrative approval of the signs if they're compliant.
They're looking for larger signs that are all under this for unique situations that's.
So I would come back to us for a site plan modification, not a whole new.
No, just a sign application.
Okay. Any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none. Are we ready to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to be closed in public hearing.
A second.
Justin, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Vera?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Let's see. We'll go back into our regular meeting mode. So under unfinished business, we have this previous public hearing application by Killenley Engineering Associates, special permanent application for additions and improvements to propose auto dealership at 21 Route 66 East and Cart Mill Road, map nine lots 65, 66, and 67 per sections 53.3, 53.4.1, and 62.9. So that's set. So Paula, you covered your comments on this.
Yes. There's a sample motion on the front of that.
Yeah, the sample motion at the end of it says "and," but there's nothing after that.
That's to leave you room for if there's other conditions you want to press.
So there's no other conditions for merging the property. Well, that's in the sample motion. Well, let me make a motion to approve the application of Killenley Engineering Associates, special permanent application for additions and improvements to propose auto dealership at 21 Route 66 East and Cart Mill Road, map nine lots 65, 66, and 67 per the application submitted, including the statement of use and statements made by the applicant at the hearings subject to the three parcels being merged. A second here. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
All of them.
Vera? Vera?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for the application and wish the client best wishes.
All right. Thank you, guys, for your time and everybody for their time. Have a nice Christmas as well.
Okay. Next up, we have election of officers. Says something, we typically do that at the last meeting of the year.
Right. It happens in December every year.
I would be, I would love to continue with chair if you would have me.
For me, I'll nominate you.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's get a full slate. You know, absent having had a discussion with Bob Powell about continuing this, secretary and Vera is vice chair. Vera, would you like to continue as vice chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll nominate Vera as vice chair. Okay, and then yeah, let's go through all of them. Then we have Bob Powell didn't really have an opportunity to have a conversation with him. What do you think we should do? Any thoughts?
Nominate him if you want.
We'll deal with it.
You know, if anyone else is interested.
He hasn't been called on to be a secretary in the two years that he's been a secretary.
Please not.
He may not have a problem with that.
No, basically just.
I said, hasn't finished his fresh job.
So let me propose a slate of myself as chair nominated by Tom. I nominated Vera for vice chair.
I nominated.
Okay.
I just like to do it.
Okay.
Vera as vice chair. And then Bob Powell to continue as secretary. And if he does not want to continue, then we will address that at a later time. So I'll nominate Bob Powell for secretary.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of adopting that slate of officers for 2023? Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vera?
Aye.
Aye. None? Abstentions done? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. I'm tracked for record. Can I vote on saying they're seated? So, Justin, as opposed to a progress update, I've been meeting with Justin and Walt Tabor about subdivision regulation revisions, why don't we wait till we have near a near full
Yeah.
attendance by the members to have a discussion?
Also, we should have whoever's taken the new planners position.
Right.
Yes.
That's right, too.
So, yeah, we've had some discussions, and we won't go into those at all tonight. We're hashing out some things, but we're going to come back to the commission and say, this is what we were thinking. What do you think? And make sure that we're not going down a path that isn't supported by the commission. So that's where we are with that. The how do you pronounce the name of the planning group? I'm going to communication reports right now.
The board, not to interrupt, but the board of selectmen are even kicking it around, too.
Did they, I thought they voted in the affirmative, too.
And the contract was signed today by both John and
That's only temporary until we find out.
Right, right. Yes, right.
Well, so we have to hire an entire company to accomplish it.
Yes.
Many, many people.
The person who's going to be taking over for me is John Gutowski, who's one of the principals there. And he is a phenomenal planner. I've known him for years and years and worked on lots of projects with him. And he is, he is a very, very good planner. So you're in good hands. And I want, I had always wondered what that firm name was, so I Googled it. And Tysh is the Greek goddess for the prosperity of towns and cities.
That's cool.
I thought that was very important.
So I went to the board of selectmen meeting where they discussed this and decided to move forward with adopting this. Mark Walter explained that it's a 12-month contract with a 60-day out clause so that we're not permitted, in essence, to more than 60 days, but we know what the cost will be on a monthly basis. We have to give them 60 days notice if we decide to go in a different direction. And ultimately, they're hoping that the Capital Region Council of Governments will come up with a staff member that is a planner, somewhat in the same vein that Wincott did for us for a period of time. And then if that doesn't happen, we can continue on an ongoing basis with the current contractual arrangement. And we'll take it one step at a time. We'll spend, it's a flat rate per month without regard to the total number of hours needed, but it's one full day per week with the planner waiting in town hall.
Eight hours, so it could be two, four hour.
What is the rate for that? It's $4,000 per month for the service of that person. So whatever time on a Monday night, we would have the town planner zooming in. Eight hours in person at the office per week plus whatever time is needed to connect with people and members of the public based on the amount of work coming in. Okay.
He's been a planner for many years in different towns, small towns. So he's, he will be the one that will be assigned here. If he is sick or disabled, then one of the other staff members would be filling in for him, but he will be ours.
What was the name again?
Gutowski. It is spelled
S M I T H.
G U S Z K O W S K I.
I'm sorry, that's not funny.
I know that House Walter worked hard for six months looking for a replacement for Paul Lynch. And then to her credit, she gave us a long lead time.
Only seven months.
Yeah.
I know you don't want to kick it around tonight, but I'm just curious if it's an easy answer. I really probably recommend to Paul. Are there a lot of small towns similar to ours in the state that use these people for a long term?
Yeah. It's getting to that point. There's not that many people getting into this field. And I was hoping that my timing would be, you know, somebody in their early 60s would want to quit full-time and do something here, but we're out in the boonies on this side of the state, I think.
Yeah.
So somebody has to.
So Mark worked diligently for six months and almost had another solution, but ultimately, you may have the best solution.
We, we had one kid who has been, I shouldn't call him a kid, he's a college student. That's all of a sudden, he showed up and said, you know, I'm going to UConn and I have a question. I was reading your plan of conservation and development as a pastime.
I can't make any point comments.
And he said, and you mentioned Red Bull Rest quite a couple of times in there. Do you have any books such as? And I said, I do. So he's come in two or three times, and he's been sitting and reading the book. He's fascinated with planning. But he has zero expensive experience. He's like a geology major or something. It just doesn't transfer over, but he was our only, okay. So the enthusiasm is there.
And you're a really quick learner.
Yeah, but not quick enough.
Just go with this other company.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
The other thing under communication reports that I wanted to bring up is just some of the changes that we've had to our upcoming public hearings. We were supposed to have two public hearings or actually one public hearing tonight. The when we place notifications and we have all sorts of state statute requirements for how we notify towns and abutting towns and the Cogs. And when we did that for both the Carroll Brigs to repeal application and also for the solar panel revision, both of those unfortunately were sent to Crog.com address. It didn't kick back because it happens to be at a church down south somewhere, and that's their email is C R C O G dot com. So it didn't kick back, nor did they say, I think you sent this to the wrong place. So what we've done, and we checked with the town attorney and we checked with, obviously, Rick about what to do with it. They're not valid. The public hearing that we already had on the repeal is not valid because the statutory requirements, we're not all filed. But Rich Roberts did say that just because you didn't meet all the statutory requirements doesn't mean that it's automatically approved or anything like that. It's just you have to do it again.
That's good.
So we have on January 9th, we've already scheduled the public hearing for the wedding venue on 79 Cart Mill. So that's January 9th. So what Rick said would be the best option would be to schedule the two public hearings that we need to do on January 23rd. So that will be the middle venue. And if the wedding venue on the 9th needs to be continued, just to continue it into February, continue it for a month. So.
23rd, what?
On the, on the 23rd will be the repeal, the repeal of the application to repeal. And I communicated with Carroll Briggs and she, she concurd that we needed to redo. And also the minor changes to the solar panel regulations that will allow its secondary use. And I will write something up for John Gutowski.
Do we send out emails with, we even receive receipts?
We do now.
And we, no, we have, the emails, there's no way to do that. What they do, CCG and CCG both reply almost automatically. And that wasn't picked up, so we didn't get that automatically on Crog. On Crog. So.
You could probably, instead of rule up so that anything automatic like that that automatically pops into a box that would remind you to check. There's some rules you can set up that you have to worry about it.
No, well, Josh can worry about it.
Josh has a new procedure in place to try and double check things like that. He's done a great job.
Yep. This new gentleman with the company is, does he have a date that he's planning this?
I know you, he's, I don't know that. He's gonna work with me and I, we don't have dates set out. But his first meeting with you would be on January 9th.
Okay. So he's a B D R remote, am I correct? Is that what I heard?
January 9th, because of the type of meeting it is, that's an in-person meeting because it's like we did the last time with them. So that's in person.
Okay. So how far away is his office? Where their office located? Is it the front?
No, no, it's on this side somewhere. I don't know exactly where it is. He comes from Holman. And I believe he lives in Woodstock. So on this side of the state.
Doesn't matter.
Cross State Burn, but I'm trying to think what I saw.
And the other thing that they're starting January 1st, every commission member of planning and zoning and ZDA have to have training, four hours of training in the first year and then four hours every other year. It's not painful, and I think you'll enjoy learning, yeah, learning some things. Weather classes, that map reading, that I'm, Tom and Donovan.
That was a while ago.
I was teaching.
Was it one of the tenures, not?
The least.
Before I was here.
It seems like it was yesterday.
Yeah. So it's, I would suggest you can do a lot of it online, the Land Use Academy, which is part of UConn, which is what?
We did.
We did.
Right. That was good.
Yeah. And they, that was a one, one, it was like a four-hour class or something.
Yeah.
They've broken that down into, I think there's five sections on map reading now, and they really take it down into different levels.
Fine. That's online already?
Yeah.
So we all have to do four hours this year.
Have to do four hours. And one of your four hours, which there's a handout in.
Next year.
One, well, next, yeah, next year. It's almost next year. One of them has to be on affordable, fair housing. Affordable and fair housing policies. The one hour of that has to be on that. We're not, we're not at the Land Use Academy.
I'm assuming this helps us where to go.
No, it does not. I can send you the link for Clear.
Is there a charge?
Clear doesn't usually charge for online.
Okay.
I see there's Clear Land Use.
Yeah, yeah.
And Josh? Josh, could you just set up a little checklist where we keep track of who has met that requirement, needs to be done by the end of the year?
Yeah, needs to be done by the end of the year.
It's around, yes.
And the, we have to notify the board of selection about who's, who's attending, who's meant the policy, who's not.
That's the end of next year, right?
Right. I mean, if we did it, we could send the, you know.
Yeah.
Because we can whatever.
Yeah. So it's, I don't think it's going to be painful. The painful part is going to be trying to find where you can, what you can watch for the affordable housing. I don't think anybody's created anything yet, so maybe do that one last. I think that's, there's no crayons to use.
So that, the one that Rick and Don, we go with, man, I don't know.
We should do the last section.
So one they did down.
East Hallow, as I remember.
East Hallow.
Yeah.
We went down to Steve Hill.
Yeah.
Judy Secretary, I hear me going, but. Cheers. Are they gonna do anything like they did when we went to Rick and Don, went to it?
They probably will.
That was so good to go there.
Might the requirements be met by that in any way?
If they cover the affordable.
Okay. Do you know if that's per this year? It's every other year.
That I don't know.
I don't know.
I went through it online, I think, last year.
Did you?
So they won't do it this coming year likely?
That would really, I still have a look.
That was helpful. You sat through it the whole day long?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Did you really?
Yes. It was an eight-hour course.
Yeah, yeah, it's eight hours.
Do you get lunch?
Yeah.
I ate one from my.
We got lunch.
Well. I admire your tenacity.
We know what's great in person is in between and the breaks and I had done, you got to talk to other people about the things that were discussed in the prior segment.
Josh.
Just made a lot more interesting.
Josh, I'll work with you to get some sort of precise document up to the members about what the requirements are, and then we'll keep a checklist and make sure that we look into the courses and maybe if there could be some bit of unity, so some of the key points, maybe we all agree to go get one or two of the same courses. I think that would be helpful. You know, we're talking about subdivision regs, maybe one of the subjects that'll come up as part of subdivision reg regulation revision might be well covered by that. So Josh, I'll interact with you and if anyone on the commission has any thoughts about courses, once we show you the location of the courses, please, let's talk about them, but we'll get right to work on this as of the first of the year.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, don't learn before January 1st because then it won't.
Okay. Because these are all online. It's not going to be an in-person thing.
There's no requirement that it be in-person. Some of it can be online, some of it can be in-person.
I'll look into the regulation with a new town planner.
You can learn before the first, but you.
Yeah, I'll speak with the new town planner and we'll see if there's any other in-person seminars that are being undertaken. I'm sure because all boards need to do this, there'll be a multitude of in-person offered, maybe other planning and zoning commissions or other land use offices will be putting on seminars and encouraging joint attendance. We've done that in the past where we put on seminars here and met members from Lebanon and Coventry and other towns of very, very. Yes, yes, see you over.
Especially the joining towns, I think.
And Josh, if I forget to mention it, when I see you, ZDA also needs to do this. It's going to be hard because they don't meet very often.
Give them more time to think of course. Give them more time to think of course.
Since this commission changed the regulations for non-conforming to allow like a scale, sliding scale for adding on a building, adding onto your building in, especially around the lake. ZDA maybe has met once since that regulations change. It's amazing.
That's, that was a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. That was one of the main reasons to do that.
I'm going to bring this up as part of, anything else to cover? As part Um, as part of open discussion, Connie Kissler sent me a list of open zoning issues, violation issues. And I'm not going to go into them in any detail because I'm going to forward them to you. You can discuss them if we have time at the next meeting. Also. Um, forward the email that she sent to me and I won't cover any of this because we won't get into it in any depth tonight. But I did bring copies of these. Um, so you'll be getting an email from me. Actually, Josh, I'll, I'll email this to you. And then have you, you send it out to everybody from the Land Use Office. So there's a record coming from the town office. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, the other big, big topic is, this is likely Paula's last meeting after twelve years, has it been, this time?
Uh, this time now, it's ten this time.
Just ten.
Yeah, it was twelve the time before.
Oh, I see, thank you. Never have I dealt with. Somebody who is better qualified and, and more knowledgeable than Paula. We, we've had a, a multitude of planners over the years. Uh, you've done a superb job and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I second that. This lady.
Yes.
John, John loves showing me in many ways as a planner. You may have to change it too and say, John, you're the best we've ever had.
Well.
He's, he's very good.
He isn't yet.
Yeah, he's not here yet. No, I'm the best right now.
So, yeah, I, I appreciate. Uh. And I appreciate that you gave us as much notice as you did, but I wish you well. I hope you're just clean retiring.
No, I'm continuing the accounting work.
Okay, all right, that, my best to you.
Thank you, thank you.
My very best to you. You're going to continue on planning and zoning in Wyndham? Okay.
Cut it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you again. Uh. Anything else under audience of citizens?
Okay.
Canadians there, Angelen's there, I don't know who else. I don't know how it is here.
We can get this done in thirty-four minutes if we keep moving. You know, that makes me happy. There's nothing to discuss under session. Uh, make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. I'm gonna save the off the record again. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, again, thanks, Paul.